All right, it's four o'clock, Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. We're going to start the town of Sangerville Select Board meeting, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's just Jody and I here today. Dale had called and let us know he would not be here today, so. Item two, approval of the minutes, Select Board meeting seven, five, 2023.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
My second, we vote in favor, both of us. Item three, review of treasurer's warrants, payroll fifty-eight, sixty, and sixty-one, accounts payable fifty-seven and fifty-nine.
Make a motion to approve A and B as read.
All in favor? My second, well, all in favor, both of us. Item four is open session. We do have guests today. This would be where you would get to speak if you wanted to speak to us.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, please introduce yourself and proceed.
I'm Dale Fluke, that's my wife Sandra. We're here to talk about the property at Centipone.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Did we reach one of these?
Thank you. Do you have, do you have?
I don't see them.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, if we look at this map, there's only two roads shown on this map. It was made years ago. Right down in the bottom, you can tell who made it. The town has a town road and a hall road, two roads, right? Town road and hall road. You see those roads?
Is the town road perpendicular to the hall road?
It goes down around the nut.
Oh. So, town road goes like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the town road, continues down here.
Do you have that too?
Comes in.
I think.
And this is the hall road. It services all these camps.
The road you're referring to is the town road is Anderson Road?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not Town Road, it's Anderson Road.
Okay, okay. So, this is Anderson?
Yeah, they changed it or whatever.
Okay, got it.
Okay, you see the two roads, right?
And this, I'm sorry, didn't mean to, what he has labeled Hall Road is Vicker.
Better.
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 No, it's not better.
Yeah, it is.
It's the Hall Road. This is the original.
No, I'm talking, I'm telling, explain to her the signage over there, the way it was.
But it ain't, it ain't the Vetter Road.
I've got a feeling that's what you're here to.
That's right.
Discuss.
But that's, just so you understand, if you go to Google Earth,
Yeah.
you're going to see Anderson and Vetter.
Okay.
And then up here, you'll see Hall.
Okay.
Okay, so, Google Earth,
Okay.
and more importantly, nine-one-one sees it in the way that I just described to you.
Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Somebody put Vetter Road on this Hall Road. And it was never accessed Vetter to his property. His property is over on the other side. The Town Road or whatever they call it. The entryway to his property is off the Town Road on the other side. We own all his property over here and down behind.
So?
So, there's never been, or never was, a Vetter Road. I don't know who put that name on there. But this road was always a Hall. My great aunt Cora Hall owned all this land. And the road was named after her. Wasn't named after Vetter. Because Vetter didn't have access to his camp on this Hall Road. The access to his camp is over on the Town Road or whatever they call it, Anderson. Comes up here, goes in here, his garage is over on that side. The only thing here is his septic system and garage right there. This Hall Road is a driveway into our camp and into these camps down here.
Okay. So, do we know the, I mean?
Do you know when the Vetter came about?
I don't, and it's on the, I mean, I can run down and get you the other town map, but it shows somewhere in here, it's Vetter, and then it changes to Hall.
Right.
And that, and I explained to them, yeah, that it's, I mean, it's Vetter, and it's Vetter on the E911 system.
But you can take it off because it's been the Hall Road from day one. I don't know who stuck Vetter on there.
I don't know.
Well, it's been Vetter for a very long time.
But with the nine, nine-one-one system.
Yeah, so it wasn't like something just happened.
And camps down there on the Hall Road. So, oh, come to the Vetter Road.
No, well, right now, if someone calls and needs assistance on the Hall Road, the people that go to assist are going to go Silver's Mills, Anderson, Vetter, Hall.
Why do they have to go on the Hall Road?
That's the way nine-one-one has it all linked together.
But you can rechange it to what it was originally.
There's all sorts of things that we could do, but why would you do it? That would be the question.
Because there isn't two roads here, there's only one road, that's the Hall Road.
Vetter isn't there anymore.
He's dead.
No, it's not the person's name, it's the actual street.
The federal government owns that property now.
Yeah, I know that, that's a whole nother issue.
Yeah.
But the sequencing of the roads with regard to nine-one-one has no relationship into who's alive or not alive.
Yeah, I mean, the McFeeters Road, the McFeeters, there's not one McFeeters that lives on McFeeters anymore. Thomas Road, no, no more Thomas.
I'm not saying that.
Oh, okay, somebody.
The original road for these camps right here is the Hall Road. It was never the Vetter Road. I don't know who named it Vetter Road. Because Vetter didn't have access to his camp on this road. And it's just not fair to leave it, the Hall, the Vetter Road, because it ain't the Vetter Road.
It's been the Vetter Road for years.
But that's not the point I'm trying to make.
Well, it is a point, though.
It was the Hall Road for years before that.
Right, but it's not right now.
No.
Well, we can change it. That's what I'm asking.
Maybe, but it's not because.
Change it back to the Hall Road, which was the original road.
There's more to it than just the two of us deciding to do that.
What's the most to?
So, then the other question is, are there camps here that have the address Vetter Road?
No.
Twenty-one Vetter Road.
They're all on the Hall Road.
Everyone has a Hall Road address, E911 address.
Or their home or whatever it is. Yeah.
So, the issue is, is if we were to rename this road, or back to the Hall Road, all the addresses would change. Am I correct? Because it's typically the measurement from where it becomes a Hall Road, correct?
Correct. It could, yes. I'm not sure where it was set up.
Right, right.
Because every fifty feet is two.
Right, is, so, so if, in fact, it was, it was or has been for whatever years, and when E911 came in, the Hall Road where it starts, where everybody has their address, only starts right here, where you're showing, I mean, this is the first time I'm looking at this. But there at each address would represent a measurement from where Hall Road started, okay?
Hall Road started out on the other road.
But when.
And then somebody put in Vetter.
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying.
Vetter had anything to do with that.
I understand, but with regard to E911 addresses, we need to get to the bottom of that first. Because every, if we were to, to go back to the Hall Road, which is what you're requesting, or?
It's the Hall Road, three quarters of the way down.
Yes, 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 I understand, I understand.
And then that last quarter of the way is called the Vetter Road, and that's both.
But when, when an ambulance, think about when an ambulance comes.
Dale.
Listen.
She's explaining it.
Yeah, okay. When an ambulance comes and it says twenty-one Hall Road, right now, this may be, I don't know, what is your address?
Do you know?
Twenty-two. That was just a guess. Well, that's because it's close to where the Hall Road starts on this map today, today. So, if, in fact, we just go willy-nilly and rename this back to what you're requesting, the Hall Road, twenty-one Hall Road would be somewhere around here for, for an ambulance, for an ambulance.
No, it wouldn't, it would be in there.
No, because it has to do with measurements. Emergency nine-one-one has to do with from the nittus of the road, the beginning of the road, in. So, when Lorna has to assign an, an E911.
How could they have changed it originally?
There, there was a process.
Well.
Somewhere along the way, there were meetings, meetings were had years and years ago, and they arrived at what you have today. That's what happened.
And probably prior to E911.
Yeah, well, municipalities around May had opportunities, they probably were fire lanes. Most towns had fire lanes.
Right, right, right.
And may have switched to names.
Right.
But that's a process that takes place with either your council or, so this happened over there, I don't know what date, but it happened years ago.
Right.
I suspect you'll have deeds that reference the Vetter Road.
Right.
And if we just willy-nilly erase it.
Yeah, no, we, right.
So, there's a process that was followed, I can't tell you, but we can research it, we'll find out what it was.
Yeah, it's good to.
There was a process.
Right, I'm going to research, because I have to go into E911, find the original word.
Do we know when E911, when, I mean, how long has that been in existence? I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know.
It's been a few years, but not a long time.
So, so it's a process, we can't just rename it because it would change if we were to go through with all the, one, Mike just made a point, and you may not have heard it, that people's deeds probably reference the Vetter Road.
What people?
There could be deeds that reference these roads the way they currently exist.
Right, and so, it's not as simple as just, you know, putting a new name on there.
Cole, the sequencing on the nine-one-one is important.
Absolutely.
If you're driving to a destination that you haven't been to, you're looking for the, and so you see Hall, and you haven't seen Vetter yet, something's wrong, this isn't what nine-one-one is telling me it's supposed to be.
Right.
So, you just can't just flip them, which, not to change the subject, but somebody over there has been moving signs. Do you have any idea who that might be?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Who?
Your select one.
Dale.
He's been moving the signs?
Yes, he has.
So, he moved the Vetter sign from its proper location?
No, he, he put a new road into our property. He lives two.
No, the roads, the Vetter and Hall signs, has he moved those?
Yeah.
No.
Well, not the Vetter and Hall.
Oh, that's what I was.
Dale put the Hall sign there. And the town manager said he had to have the Vetter Road, so he's got the Vetter Road on top of that sign and the Hall Road underneath it. That was.
Well, the Vetter sign went missing for a while.
He took it down for one day until somebody complained.
Dale did?
Well, we don't know, we can't accuse him.
Well, who took it, who put it back?
He didn't, no, he didn't take our sign.
It was Dale that took the signs down.
Dale took the Vetter sign down?
Not the Vetter sign, the sign's on the leach field.
Okay.
No, it's great, Dale, you're in the wrong place.
We're concerned about the actual Vetter Street sign.
Okay.
That went missing.
Dale took, Dale took it down.
We've got Dale, right.
Mr. Fluke took it out.
Mr. Fluke.
Yes, Mr. Fluke took it down.
Okay.
And he put the Hall Road up. And he misunderstood what she said. And so, he thought he could put the Hall Road up. When he got a complaint, which I don't know who from, but I probably know, he went right up there and he put the, and she said, put the Vetter sign above it, and you can keep the Hall Road there, and she says, and that's what he said like, that's what she had told him last year. So, he gets over, and that road when you go down now is Vetter and Hall.
Which it should not be. Because it should be Vetter, and then Hall should be up at this intersection.
Yeah, but she's the one that told him he could do it.
Okay, that's me, I'm one of the town managers. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you're the town manager, I am.
Yes, I am. So, when I spoke with you on the phone, I asked you to put the Vetter sign up, and we came to a compromise that you'd leave the Hall Road sign up until you came to this meeting, but I did ask you to put the Vetter sign up.
And you did.
And I did explain to you it's because of E911.
Yeah.
And that was my compromise, just so that we could, until you came here as far as the Hall. What you're talking about last year has nothing to do with signs, it had to do with the tax billing and stuff. But that was my compromise with you, was just to make sure that you get the Vetter Road sign back up.
And you went right up and did it after we talked.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's one thing if you put Hall Road and put an arrow, that, okay, you're on the Vetter Road and you keep going to the Hall Road, but not with.
Well, you can't be moving.
No, 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 no.
There's no occasion where that can be done.
Well, town signs.
You can't shake the Vetter sign down?
No, absolutely not.
I can, I know that.
Right, well, you did.
Well, I did, yeah.
And you moved, you also took the Hall sign down and then moved it to another location.
Yeah, because it was three quarters of the way down that road.
And that's exactly where nine-one-one expects to see it.
And we had permission. We had permission, and we'll take it down.
That would be great.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Thank you. Now, we have another complaint about Dale.
Dale?
The other Dale, not Mr. Fluke.
Our.
This not, this forum isn't for that. I mean, if you have a.
It's about, it's about our land.
Yeah, that, we don't have any jurisdiction on.
No, on private, private disputes.
This ain't a private dispute, he's crossing across.
Right, that's between two landowners.
To get to the.
Between what?
If, if I had someone trespassing on my property, I wouldn't come to the Select Board to ask for assistance with the trespass.
You wouldn't?
No.
What would you do?
Call the police, I'd get an attorney, those, those.
That's what I'm going to do.
That's what you need to do. But we don't have any jurisdiction to, be like if someone was parking in your field. If you call us, we can't do anything about that.
We understand.
Okay?
We understand.
Yeah.
And it's, it came down to this where we were putting this, no trespassing, he made a road through there, right over the septic tank, and, oh, Vetter septic tank. And he kept taking it, the signs down and throw them in the woods. Someone's here now, he's up in Alaska for a few weeks. So, he's here, he's not here right now, but he talked to him and talked to him, he showed him the maps, and he said, no, I have the right of way through here from a mod Fluke. No mod Fluke has ever, ever owned any place. We own all the land on this side, all the land on this side, and our camp and everything. Vetter has a little patch there.
Yeah, I'm not.
And I know, I know you can't.
But rights of way have nothing to do with land ownership.
No.
So, that's what, I would proceed to.
But they can't come and do that.
Well.
And take it over.
If he doesn't have a right of way, he will probably be found guilty of something. If he does have a right of way, then.
No, he doesn't have a right of.
Then you.
Well, that, that's, that's all things that attorneys deal with.
Yeah, okay, we understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if you try to change it, he would.
Well, we'll do some research as to when this all could play.
I will do some research on the nine-one-one and when all this stuff changed. There's, just bear with me, because a lot of it's in the old building, and I had to go back and forth, but I will do some research. And I do have your phone number, and I'll give you a call and just, I'll keep you up to date with how everything's going on the research, okay?
Because I can understand what happened there, and I can also understand how he feels because it was original, you know, and so I understand that. And when our road that is the Vetter Road now and then the Hall Road, our land is on both sides, don't we own that road? I know people have to have the right of way in it, we own that road, right?
Correct, absolutely.
So, we can keep people off that road.
If they don't have right of way, you can't, if they don't have a right to use it.
But if they have a right of way, you cannot keep them off that road.
No, I know, I know. We've always, we even let Vetter go down that road, you know, years ago. I mean, we're good neighbors. We've never had any problems up there, and now at our age, we don't need any.
Right.
So, you guys are going to put the signs back where they were at the beginning of the summer?
We will.
And we'll do some research as to when all this came about, and there's a process.
Right.
Why do we have to wait till we handle the summer?
Well, because.
No.
It's terrible.
Because Lorna, a lot of the documentation is in this old building, so she can't, it's not readily accessible. She has to get to it. And she has to leave her post at the new office, so it's going to take a while. And it's a lot of paperwork, I got to find what years, and I mean, so it's a lot of research, but I'll do it. And I'll get back to you, okay?
We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dale?
Yeah, did you want to talk to your looking at?
You don't need to.
No, thank you.
You have it, huh? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You didn't want to talk?
No.
I do.
No.
I have much of a mess.
We've got all the tax.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Old business, Town Hall Building? Item five.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I have nothing other than I'm going to look into the two comps.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Big letters.
New business, abatement. Map four, lot thirty-two dash zero nine nine, fifteen hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Map oh oh four, oh four two, oh oh two, and map oh oh six, oh oh seven, oh oh two, homestead omitted.
Yes, so here are the three abatements. One was because one home was moved, no longer there, and two of them, yeah, they had filled out their homestead and didn't receive them, it was just an oversight on the possessive part. Okay, so these are both, so this one, the home was, is no longer there? Is no longer, yeah. And this one, there's two of them, two different taxpayers, but they, they didn't receive the homestead credits. So, three, okay, these two are credits and this is a? They're all credits, yeah. Okay, okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve this abatement for, should I do the account numbers or the map lots?
The maps and lots as read.
Okay, maps and lots as read. The first one being fifteen hundred thirty-three point seventy-five cents. And the second one, three hundred sixty-four thirty-nine, and the third, three sixty-four thirty-nine credits.
All right, second. Any further discussion? None? We vote, both of us are in favor.
Yeah, and you just want some. Okay.
And cemetery deed for Bailey's Galette.
Yeah, Carol Ann Galette from Bath, Maine, purchased plot ten, lot D, the five by ten plot at Bailey's. Just a question, so anyone can purchase a lot in Sangerville? Yes, but her family's from here. Okay, okay, I was just, that's interesting. Yeah. So, I will make a motion to go ahead and approve this sale of this cemetery lot, plot ten, lot D, in the Bailey Cemetery. Just a question, Dale is not here, do we need all three signatures or?
Two's good.
Two, two is a quorum.
Okay.
My second.
Okay.
And any further discussion? No, we vote, we're both in favor.
So, I signed online. Oh, whoops.
That's all right. I'll sign online, too.
The more I do, the worse they get. And you gave me something? Oh, there's an, okay. Attachments, very good. Okay. Town manager's report?
I don't have any, other than, I will say, since June 29th to today, we've received three hundred and fifty-seven thousand so far in tax money, and none of it's been from the mortgage companies yet, so. Ah, that's something pretty good. Okay.
Good.
Very good. Just a, oh, question, as far as your meeting with the other town managers, I know, so they still allow the fire departments to have the boot drive money. There's some towns that don't even do it anymore, that don't allow it, but they're allowed to keep their money. But it might be, maybe they're treated as a different entity as what, I'm not sure how their fire department works compared to ours, but.
You know, I read descriptions of town meetings and votes and motions every day in the paper, and I know they're not following the rules, so, just, and I'm sure we, we mess up sometimes too, but just because somebody does it a certain way, doesn't necessarily mean it's the proper way.
Right, right. And, and any, any update with regard to mutual aid, any? You know, they just say it's part of a requirement, and it's required by the state that you have mutual aid, but they, it's like, well, you really got to show. So. Because I explained to them. Right, right. It's like, when we go to Cambridge, Gilford's getting paid for Cambridge, but we're not getting paid. Right. And how this work. Right, okay. Yeah, I do think that, although I do think we're becoming more in line with what's legal, as far, legally, as far as that's concerned, as far as the money.
Don't let me interrupt.
Oh, I think we're.
Well, would you like to interrupt, Mr. Ron?
We have a, a late.
Want to start this, Luke?
Well, he'd like to make an offer for that piece of land on the corner. You'd mentioned this in a previous meeting.
Yeah.
And he's giving it to me here in writing.
He said it had to be in writing, and I'm just, my apologies, I'm busy.
It's okay, no one else got in ahead of you. So, what will happen is, we're anticipating a special town meeting before next year's normal, so this will be on the warrant.
And we don't need to read this or anything?
No, no, it will all be posted in advance on the warrant if we get to read it. We've got a few items.
So, yeah, it's a process, as. Good? Very good.
Like I said, but Ford's, my intention is parking.
Right, right now, is it what grassy, right? It's, it's, is it grassy?
It's mostly grass, it's pretty solid ground, though.
Is there a curb, so that as far as curbing, so would you have to?
There is access off of Doby Hill.
Oh, there is access off of Daddy Hill?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so you wouldn't have to.
It's kind of a useless piece.
You wouldn't have to go through the state to, to put a driveway onto there, because.
Was that given to us by number all?
Yeah, well, I've looked at the deed, and it looks like it is. I think one of the condition is the sign has to stay up there.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, they own like a circle there where their sign is, and if I, I know I have a right of way through there, and I think Diane's building has a right of way through there as well.
But there may have been a stipulation about being able to see his sign.
Yeah, and I haven't found that yet, so I'm still, I did look for it.
So, we just need to know any encumbrances before we sell it to someone else. Because if you couldn't park a large vehicle in front of that sign, you might not want it. I don't know that that's the case, by the way, I'm just saying we need to find out what.
If, if, and I don't see it being necessary, but if one of the delivery trucks had to back in there in such a short period of time, it wouldn't be considered blocking the sign.
We'll just find out what encumbrances there are.
Yeah, I'll double check.
Anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. Anything else, Lana, item seven?
No, no, I think we're good. I think definitely the way that we're going to handle the future donations or, is the way to go.
Yeah, I think it's really the only legal way to do it, so.
Put it on the warrant and get town's approval.
Well, if, if they're just donations, we don't need, we can take them.
Right.
Donations with a specific.
That's what I mean, with a specific, right.
Then you can't, then they have to.
Right, correct.
But obviously, if a stranger is giving somebody five dollars, they don't have a specific, so. And I would say, anybody doing a fundraiser on behalf of a municipality, you really, you, if you have specifics, you're actually making it more cumbersome.
Right, for your.
If we did a fundraiser for the park, as opposed to a new slippery slide.
Right.
We, we, the park is broad enough, we could just take donations.
Right.
In fact, we had that with the veterans.
Yes.
They, they wanted to donate it for some sort of a monument at the park, and we told them that was going to have to go to a vote.
Right.
And they didn't want to wait for that, so they just donated it to the town to help with the park, which we can do.
Right, right.
Okay. And, and your legal work that you sent, spell that out exactly.
Exactly, yeah, it just, right, reinforces exactly what we.
I guess it would, the idea is, the town could be committed to doing something with the money that it didn't necessarily want to do.
Yeah, that's true.
So, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, somebody could earmark it, and it may not be what.
And I shared that with Chad and Matt too, so.
Road commissioner's report?
So, Francis Mills has been, the poor halls have been filled. They did a good job.
Yeah, they did do a good job.
They did, I have been up there.
I got a little grossing because the reclaim that they took out, they just dumped on the side of the road. It's one of those things, when you see it, the next morning, it looks like, I got a feeling by next spring, you won't be able to find it, but I did get a comment on that. I'm sure from their point of view, it was a few wheelbarrows full. I'm sure from their point of view, it was a few wheelbarrows full.
Right.
But...
Yeah, they should take it with them, please, no.
Yeah.
Or I could use it to when I'm going potholes.
Well, is it sat now? I mean, it...
Well, it was old pavement, ground up. They did a great job. They ground these rectangles, so you have a nice straight wall, and then they patched, filled it in.
Yeah.
But what they took out, technically, I guess it'd be like a reclaim.
Right, right.
And I may go down with my tractor and just spread it out, so it'll, you know, the grass will grow through it again.
Right.
But...
But so, and then we did some coal patching on Line Road and Maple Street. We filled some pothole, potholes there, and Brockway Mills is done. I spoke with Chris yesterday. He'll be, the rain, I'm tired of it, but he should be starting the culverts. I told him to do the one, I think he's gonna do the one by Bob Brown's for us, because that one's really gone downhill. And the two on twenty, you know, four twenty-three, but he said that we'll start tomorrow. I'll be on top of them.
What about mowing?
Yeah.
Mowing, I talked to Vance Lambert, and he said he'll be there the twenty-seventh of July.
There being where?
To, to do our roadside mowing.
Oh, all it, yes.
And let's just, because in years past, Dale has had to go and do the boat landing road. Let's make sure he has that on his inventory.
Yeah, yes, I'll make sure that gets on there.
Because that's starting to look like a hayfield, and I know what's gonna happen, is traffic's gonna go back onto that private road, which we don't need that happening. I mean, the road's fine, it's just fill the grass.
Yeah. I'll make sure to get, I'll send him that map of that on there.
Anything else?
No.
Slight concerns?
Well, the only thing is, is in the parking down here, just, there's a four-wheeler. I know you said you'd spoken to the owner, but it's still there. And so I just was wondering if there's any update with regard to that, not Bible check.
I don't know that we have any jurisdiction. We don't have an ordinance to prohibit.
Yeah, yeah.
There's probably a plate on it, on that trailer. It's registered, in other words.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so...
It's all registered, yeah.
Now, if we had a parking, or if it was snowing.
Right, right, right.
We do have, we do have an ordinance for that.
Right, right.
But I don't think we have an ordinance to prohibit anybody from parking there.
And just using it as parking.
Correct. In fact, if this project goes through, I anticipate lots of people parking there. These people run out of space here, and they got gas.
Park down there.
They'll be parking down. You add eight families here.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
So, I had a, just a quick back and forth with the CEO. And he's got a couple of cases he's working on and wanted to, he, he phrased it a hurry-up letter from an attorney, and wanted to know if we would authorize that expenditure. And I got, my thought is, with this new, this ordinance that we're now enforcing, it would seem to me that that would be within the CEO's latitude as far as notice letters and that sort of thing.
Right.
If we're going to get involved in litigation, we actually go to court, then I would think, yeah, the select would want to...
Know that we're...
No, we're gonna...
Stepping into that.
Yeah. And, you know, that got me thinking about maybe a more of a process where I could see the CEO comes to the select board and says, okay, we've run out the clock, we've got this amount in what we feel are fines. I think I have a good case. I wanna take it to court.
Right.
We might, we might wanna see what his case is. We could go into executive session, look at his case, and decide, are we willing to put the town's money at risk on this?
Right.
But I think for just a letter, we should let him do that. Yeah, that, because otherwise, he can't even advance the ball every...
Yeah, it'd hold him up two weeks or whatever it may be for the next meeting.
And so that really should, this should be a part of the budget. It could come right out of operating expenses for the town office.
Right.